Sit right up here. Come sit next to me.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. For the public to join this meeting remotely through Zoom, please use the link posted on the agenda on the town's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Is anyone else recording this meeting? All right, if you would join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our vision, the vision of the Auburn Public Schools, to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
Are there any citizens' comments? No? All right. Special recognitions?
Thank you, Ms. McQuillis. So this evening, you'll see this lovely crowd we have here. We'd like to recognize that the MIAA, the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association and Special Olympics Massachusetts, announced that the Auburn High School Unified Track and Field Team was selected as one of the recipients of the 2023 MIAA Unified Track and Field Team Sportsmanship Award on May 24th. As one of only three teams receiving this honor out of 100, we're so very proud of our athletes and their coaches who support them. A special thanks to Ally DeLuca, who was unable to be here this evening with us, who has served as a key ingredient and cheerleader for Auburn to be unified. And thanks to Mr. Walton, our Director of Pupil Services, who's done an amazing job in his first year as Director of Pupil Services, along with the coaches and supports that have gone along with making this such a successful program. So Mr. Walton does have a little bit to share with us about this, and perhaps we'll hear from a few students. So give me a minute, Mr. Walton.
Do I have control?
Uh, maybe. There you go.
All right. As you can see how important Unified is to Auburn by the crowd that you have here. I wasn't expecting this, but thank you, I appreciate it. So Unified, I'm just gonna give you a little update, a year review of what Unified has done this year. As Mrs., as Dr. Chamberlain said, Ally DeLuca, she's the person behind this. She couldn't be here tonight, so she did leave a message for everyone. I'll read really quick. So, "I apologize for not being here." I can't see the words on my screen.
Do you want me to read it? I can read it, Greg.
Oh, you can see it, right?
I can't see the very time.
That's what I'm saying.
She's not present, but nine years ago, she asked if she could bring Unified Sports to the high school. Today, there are great coaches and the team here, and the most honorable award, the state's Sportsmanship Award. Says a lot about what Unified's done for the community and how many people have supported this initiative and contributed to its success. She had no idea that it would be this way, but I will say she is also very humble for anyone out there who could also attest to that with the work that she has put into this. And just so, she put together this presentation just to see how Unified has spread like wildfire for the good of this community, and it creates an environment free of judgment and full of joy. I can attest to that. It's easy to get behind students leading a revolution of positive change for acceptance and inclusion.
Thank you. This thing's jumping around here. It's going backwards. I don't think I have control there.
I don't think I do either.
All right, let me just go, I'll skip through then.
Oh, there you go.
It's going backwards though, that's why.
Oh.
Sorry. As you can see, it's a long PowerPoint. All right, so in June of 2022, two students were chosen from each state to go down and participate in the USA Special Olympics Games, and two of those students were from Auburn High to represent Massachusetts. And one of them's here tonight, Tyler. So he went back. That's a big accomplishment, because they represented Massachusetts and they were chosen from Auburn. These are some pictures. As you can see, Tyler and Zad had known each other for a very long time. In July 2022, Unified was also featured on Zip Trip on Channel 25 Boston News. At the high school, I know this year, I think it's the first year, they had three trimesters of Unified classes. So trimester one, they had digital media, and trimester two, they had Unified Art, and trimester three, Unified PE. This was the eighth season of the Unified basketball team. They had a victorious season, a winning season. One thing I did notice this year, a lot of athletes from the basketball team participated in the Unified sport this year, so that was very important to see. This year, we also had a Unified versus Staff basketball game. I got to see this game, and the gym was packed, and it was loud.
Fun.
And it was a lot of fun, I would say. Also, this year, we were chosen from one out of 12 schools in the state and one out of 165 in the nation to be selected as the National Banner Unified Champion School. This year, it was the Polar Plunge. I know a lot of athletes participated at, participated. I got to see a lot of pictures, it was pretty cool. They did, they plunged into a pool at Polar Park, and they were taking pictures as they were diving in. They raised over $5,000, and some elementary schools raised for the plunge, to plunge their principals. Unified Bingo Night, this was the first of the Unified Bingo Night, and I was a part of planning this, and this was a lot of fun. Whoever was there, I took my family, and it was a lot of fun. And I can tell you right now, Brooke Beverly was made for this. This is the second year of Unified basketball at Auburn Middle School. I was able to attend every game, so thank you to Ally Shankel and Rachel Lowe. It was the largest team out of all the teams in Massachusetts. We had 33 team members. Like I said, I went to every game, it was fun to watch, and the crowds went into it. Claire Swenson, is she here?
Yeah.
She's our Unified Track Coach. I don't know if you have something quick to say about the track team?
I'm sure the kids can share. Lucas, why do you like to be on track? Oh, sure. Lucas, do you want to go to the podium? Amalia, do you want to go to the podium? Haley, Gabby, do you want to go?
If you just speak really quickly.
Yeah, you need to give your sentence. Because I think it's more important than you.
Truck is so, truck is so fun.
It's so much fun.
So much fun.
And we're commemorating.
I think it's just honestly a great experience to be on the team and be able to see how united everyone is, and even not just from Auburn, but other schools, and how Auburn is so good at interacting with other schools, while just being one big community.
Nice.
Yeah, kind of what Haley said, the teamwork is just phenomenal. Everybody's super nice to each other, everybody congratulates each other when they do a good job, just really good energy.
You got to say, "likey."
Me? I like Unified because I like sports. Nice. Excellent.
I think the special thing about Unified is that you're not only getting that physical component of a sport, but you're getting the emotional joy from that, and that's something that not a lot of sports are like great at giving to you because of the competition within it, but in Unified, you're never missing out on that, so.
Nicely said.
Sportsmanship Award. Unified School Day Games. So I did have to thank the district myself personally, because I've been doing special education for a long time, and no matter how many events you put on, and something goes wrong, there's complaints, but this was the first time in my history there was not one complaint. Thank you, Ally, and thank you to the athletes and partners. So there were over 200 students from grades K to 12, and over 100 students participated as volunteers. Thank you to APD and Auburn Fire Department, they came out in full force that day. And these are just some pictures from School Day Games. More pictures.
Mr. Walton, can anyone participate?
Yes.
In the Unified Games?
Anyone can participate in Unified. Let me ask you, do you want to talk about that? How'd you join? Because I know they started Rockets to Rockets, but Unified is a little bit different than Rockets to Rockets, because you can join, go to class, join Unified classes, or you join Unified Sports also.
So basically, I was introduced to the program by my friend who's here today, Gabby Mahoney, and I remember last year going outside to support the kids in the Rising Evolved Classroom during the School Day Games, and I remember telling myself that next year I really wanted to volunteer and be a part of it. So this year, I was lucky enough to intern in the Rising Evolved Classroom during two trimesters, where I formed not only a good connection with the students, but as well as the faculty, and they gave me an opportunity to be a part of this year's School Day Games, and I'm gonna be forever grateful for that.
Nicely said.
Some more pictures. And there's a couple of quotes that Ally added here. "For the biggest disease in America is not cancer or heart disease, it's isolation," by the Surgeon General. And she just put in some quote, not quotes, but what it means to be a Unified Champion School. So there's, I guess there's three components to it, so it's Unified Sport, Inclusive Youth Leadership, and Whole School Engagement. And I think that's the most important one, is the Whole School Engagement. I've been in other districts, but this is the most inclusive districts I've ever been in, or worked in, I should say. And then she just wanted to thank you guys for supporting us, so, thank you.
That's great.
Any questions? I can do one thing?
Yeah.
Can I have whoever's able to stand up, introduce themselves?
Hi, Molly.
Hi, Molly. Hi, Molly.
I'm Carly.
Hi, Carly.
Met Lucas, met Amalia.
Hi, Jack. Hi, Jack.
I'm Lily.
Hi, Lily.
My name is Tyler.
My name is Nora.
Hi, my name's Olivia.
My name's Stella.
Well, thank you guys, I really appreciate the support tonight.
Excellent. Thank you all for coming. That's wonderful. If I could, if I could just ask you all to stay for one more minute, we do have one more short presentation, if that's okay? Okay. So while we have all kids here, and then you'll all be able to go. We also have a spotlight on students at each of our meetings. This evening, we have Packard Chog, some students from second grade at Packard Chog with Mrs. Stanek, to present their Community Service Learning Project, along with Mrs. Dunn, Mrs. Gitar, Katerina, Avery, David, and Noah.
All right, so we are very proud to bring to you our amazing second graders and a couple of our amazing second grade teachers, and the students are going to tell you a little bit about their Community Service Learning Project that benefited Auburn Youth and Family Services, and I am so proud of each and every one of them.
Yeah, I'm not finding the way that they go.
It's right at the top.
There we go. There we go.
The second, wait, each year, the second grade students, along with their teachers, try to come up with a project that will help those living in Auburn. This year, we just, this year, we decided to create birthday packages, which included pans, cake mixes, fastings, bows, stickers, spingles, and homemade cards from the second graders. Some students in each room helped the adults put the packages together. Because of our awesome families and their generous donations, we were able to put together 12 birthday packages. This project was eye-opening for many second graders. Most of us are lucky and get a cake or cupcake or some other treat when it's our birthday. We now know that is not true for every child, even some of our very own classmates, so we really wanted to do this. Everyone deserves some kind of special treat on their birthday, so we all say, "Let's eat cake."
A few more of our second graders and the pictures that they had done for everybody, and so proud of them and the projects that they decided to do. It was awesome.
That's a terrific presentation.
And of course, they were so appreciative at AYFS. And I just want to do one other shout-out, because as we're talking about Unified and the Unified Games, Avery was also one of our partners for one of our students at Packard Chog, so. Thank you so much for having us.
And also, two boys skipped their baseball game tonight, so that just shows their dedication and understanding of public serving, and knowing that this was an important night. So they gave up something to share with all of you, so I thought that was a great thing for such little kids.
Thank you for coming.
To know the coach, and there was some sweet talking that had to.
Any questions?
Well, thank you all. This is always the highlight of our evening, is to have our students and our staff here. We thank you all for coming tonight. So we're going to transition. I'm gonna take one more minute to introduce our newest school committee member, who this is her first meeting tonight. I'm pleased to welcome Stephanie Parker with us, is the newest member of the school committee. Stephanie's a proud resident of Auburn for the past 14 years. She has a student coming into kindergarten with us, and she looks forward to supporting not only her own child, but all the students in Auburn. In the past, she's worked with medical students and residents at UMass, and currently supports nursing students at Quincy Community College, and she looks forward to joining us, so welcome. Yes. Thank you. All right, so we're gonna ask quick, if all the Unified folks could come up and stand up here, we're gonna try and get a quick picture with you here with us, and then we'll get one with you guys, and then everybody can go. We'll be on your way, okay? Student Representatives. I did. We'll get back. Yep, stand right up here. Come on up. It's getting hot in here. Oh my god. Do it all. You might be over here on the side, she goes over there to take the picture. Oh, absolutely. Okay, then we gotta go to front. Go around. I'm sorry, but I don't want it tonight.
No, 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 it's all right then. It's all right.
Perfect.
All right, everyone, fabulous job. Thank you for coming. Excellent job. Thanks, families, thank you for coming. All right, now we'll get you folks up here. Come on up here. Thank you.
So, if they have questions, so. And they have to approve it, and if they have questions.
Thanks, everyone.
My brother will be going.
Thank you so much. All right, thanks, everyone. Fabulous job. Thank you for coming, and thank you for doing such a good job. Me too, kid. I want to go to Friendly's too.
I think so. Black Raspberry Challenge is the way to go.
Okay, we'll go to Juvella, and then we'll see if we can win that off. Yes, thank you. Ms. Peck? Oh, yes. No, 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 we've only met for like 20 minutes so far. I'm ready for orientation. Right, thank you.
I realized it the second I got here. I forgot to send the last one.
We're gonna have to wait, because that's not, we'll wait on that.
We're gonna have to table that.
I have one number one fan.
All right, Bella, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Get really cute kids and amazing programs and.
I get it, they take precedent over me.
You're almost a senior, so. Student Representatives report.
So exciting things are happening, because it's the end of the year now. We have, I think, just over a week left. So to recap what's happened before, though, the junior class held a car wash this last weekend to fundraise. The turnout was great, even though it was raining, and over $1,000 was raised for our class, which is impressive.
Wow.
The seniors had a full week of field trips before their graduation, including a cruise, which I have enjoyed seeing all of the photos on Instagram. It was, it looked like it was beautiful. The graduation had a great turnout, it was inside because of the rain, but the decorations were beautiful. Today, the history classes for World History had someone come in to teach them how to play cricket outside as part of their imperialism unit, which was interesting, they missed like two or three hours, and it was fun to watch them through the window, trying to figure it out. Yearbooks have finally come out. I've been in yearbook club this whole time, so I know how much work it takes to get them out, but there, I'm really proud of what our group has been able to do, they're beautiful. I believe they actually had to do a reorder, because there was so much demand for the yearbooks this year, which is very sweet. Tomorrow's the junior class field trip, we're going up to Lemansky for a field day that includes activities like yard games, water games, a food truck, and ice cream. And on Monday, there's a freshman class trip to Canterbury Lake. And of course, to wrap up all these fun things, we do have finals next week.
Can't forget that. That's great.
Anything else? Nope? Excited to almost be summer?
I am, I'm very excited. I'm doing Girl State at the end of the year, so I'm excited to do that.
That's great.
Where is that, Bella?
It's at Stonehill College.
Nice. Is that what you're doing? What, what, what's the rest of the stuff you're doing for the summer, anything big?
I'm doing a summer program at Tufts.
Nice.
For international relations, I'm very excited about that.
That's amazing. Amazing. I'll have to report back and talk.
I will, absolutely, I will, you probably won't be able to shut me if I don't.
Well, thank you, Bella, you're welcome to stay, or enjoy the.
I got the, I got the ski trip lowdown already, so.
Thanks, Bella.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna skip ahead to out-of-state field trip approval.
Just get to where I am here. The Auburn High School Ski and Snowboard Club Advisors, Mike Young and Eric Berg, are requesting your approval for an out-of-state field trip to Sugarloaf Mountain Resort in Carabasat, Valley Main. The trip will take place on Friday, March 8th through Sunday, March 10th. Details regarding the fees and accommodations in your packet. Eric's here if we have any questions about that. Eric, I think this is a trip we've done multiple times previously, yes?
Would you like to go to the microphone?
Yeah, you do.
Yes, so we do an out-of-state trip every year. We pick a weekend in March, usually about the changeover of trimester, so it doesn't interfere with classes too much. It's a different place each year, so this is the first time going to Sugarloaf.
Okay.
But it's a similar schedule and similar process to the previous trips, not as big as the Park City trip from this past year. And Mike Young usually organizes all this, puts it together, because I deal with the Wachusett stuff. So he just shared with me, from our last trip, I know fundraising is always an issue, because the trips can be expensive, but we were able to raise almost $4,000 through raffles and fundraising last year, so we're hoping to do something similar this year to help offset the cost for students.
I did read through this, I think there is some clear qualifier in case the weather were to impact this trip.
Yeah, so this one doesn't involve planes and multiple legs of travel.
But even so, right, people will understand that if for some reason the weather were horrific.
Yeah.
That kids would not go.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons, and it didn't work out so easily this year, but we pick that middle of March, because we tend to not have big snowstorms around.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just a little traumatized by that.
We all were. It was a long day of travel, yeah.
So, does anyone have any questions?
Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to Sugarloaf Mountain. I missed it, I'm sorry. March 8th to March. Yeah, March 8th through Sunday, March 10th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
I will second, absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Good luck, you guys. May there be a nice. May the weather be in your favor. And a lot of snow. Thank you for coming. They actually redid the amenities up there, my friend went up there this past year, and it's actually really nice. That trip to Salt Lake was rough. Yeah, that was a little scary.
All right, we'll move on to unfinished business, I believe?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Excellent. So at our last meeting, I had shared with you the 360 Leadership Survey that was done on me by the people that, who directly report to me from the leadership team, along with progress on my goals for this past year. And so the intention was to give you all some time to be able to review all of that. We talked a bit about it at the last meeting, I went through some of the progress I made on my goals, and then I look now for feedback from all of you on areas of focus for the coming year that you'd like me to look at, based on what happened this year, and anything you may hear from constituents and the like. I can share, I can share with you some of my kind of wonderings, as far as ideas for goals, if you'd like.
Yeah, definitely, sure.
So Universal Design for Learning, which is found throughout our strategic plan, as well as the work that was conducted this past year. We do have another formal, it's our third year of training around Universal Design for Learning, that will continue. My intention with that is to ramp up the number of visits I have with principals, looking for that in classrooms and visiting classrooms, so that would be my angle into that, is through them. Obviously, facilitating the movement of the strategic plan with some formal meetings and updates provided to the community related to our progress on the strategic plan that was approved by you back in February. Another area of focus we're finding is really amplifying and refining our use of data in determining, making sure our students are achieving at the levels we want them to, particularly those who are disproportionately perhaps represented in our community, our special education students, some of our students of color, to make sure that they're, they're achieving at the letter, you know, at the levels that we want all of our students to achieve that. We're also going to begin some training on restorative practices. So restorative practices is a positive approach to discipline infractions that takes a learning lens on trying to teach kids why whatever happened was maybe not the best choice on their part, and beyond that, to build a safer community for all, because it addresses that community building at Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. So we're having two days of training for a small group of us right after school gets out for two days, and we're gonna continue to build that training as we go through next year. So that's gonna be another big thing, and I do unfortunately get involved in a number of disciplinary situations that take place across the. number of disciplinary situations that take place across the district, so I'll be able to work to model my own learning around that for the principals. And then finally, really looking at refining our personnel processes around here, as far as onboarding new staff and monitoring changes in staffing and shifts in staffing. A lot of that has really been done very manually for a long time. We need to kind of take a step forward into, into a new world and bring some technology in to help us to do that. I have some great staff who are really making things much better than they have been, but we need some work around that, to make sure that when we onboard someone, they're looking at us as a professional organization, so. Those are just some ideas I had, but I, I look to you for any input you may have.
I think especially restorative practices is, is really important. I, I know there are some times that students have to get suspended, but then I always wonder, if students getting suspended, what are they doing at home instead of, you know, in, in school or whatnot?
And the laws are different now, so it's, it's not as easy to like just, you're out. Like, you may have to, we have to teach the kids, like, what, why, why are you doing this? Like, how to, how do we talk it through? I think it's a good thing.
I think it's great. I like all of them.
And I like the idea of, like, looking at the data, too, because I think that, you know, when we did our MCAS review from the year before, like, we seemed to be lower in the sped department, so how can we fix that? Because we do, you know, we do need to make sure we're getting the outliers in the community. Yeah, and we, like, we do a lot of work around data, and it happens all the time. I think we just need to take a look at, what are we looking at it? How are we looking at it? Are we taking the right lens to it, to make sure that we're getting out of that, right? Because you can get a lot of things out of data. You have to be careful about that, so it really is a refinement process for us, so. The hard thing with MCAS, though, is it doesn't, like, break it down as much as, like, the MAP testing, the measured annual progress. So, like, you could have a kid that fails MCAS, but like, you don't know exactly why, whereas with, like, MAP, you can look and say, okay, they really bombed, you know, figurative language, like, how do, let's work on that. So, that would be an interesting, like, combination, see. And we don't have MAP, but we do use iReady, which is very similar, yeah, very similar, so.
And how are we, post-pandemic, social-emotional? Is that something we need, anything on? I know we've put a ton of stuff in place. Are we pretty solid there, do you feel?
I don't know that we're solid there. So, we're, we're rebuilding our district mental health team, our district-wide mental health team, to make sure that Mr. Keller's been working with them on building a, like, a multi-tiered system of support, to make sure that, along with our universal screener, that we've been hit or miss with that, with finding the right tool to screen kids. We are going to get better at using the vocal data, which I shared with you last year, which was actually a year old, but now in the fall, we'll have new data about that, which talks about, asks kids about their sense of belonging and feeling safe in school and those kind of things, and if they have someone that can help them. Through our bullying intervention plan, we're also going to be doing our own internal kind of surveys of kids, to see about that sense of belonging, which we did this past fall as part of my entry plan, but we found the information to be valuable, with what kids say about how they feel about how their school is, is going, you know, their school experience. So, we're really trying to build up a bigger sys, a feedback loop, right? Where we're asking our families more often what they're thinking about things, where we're asking kids, where we're asking our teachers, so that it really does become a community event, right? It's not, it's not me or the principals making decisions. We're making decisions that are based on what our stakeholders are, are looking for. That could fall into the amplifying and refining our, like, use of data, too, because that falls right in there. The, you know, you're doing the surveys, you're asking the parents, like, that falls right into that as well, you know? Yep. So, I think that would be good to add that piece in.
Do you survey the parents, too, along with the students?
I did in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah, I did survey the families in the fall, and I also had some, a focus group with some families in the fall, but I hope to do that, I think more so with kids. We're also looking at building some leadership structures for students at the middle school and high school, you know, kind of like leadership advisory groups for the principals.
And touring type of a thing, okay.
But so that they can have a, a seat at the table when they, we talk about changes in the school, right, that they're part of that.
So they feel invested?
Yes.
Absolutely. I love that.
I think kids have, at this age, kids, especially middle school, kids have a lot to say, and they can really open your eyes to things that you might not realize, you know, and then they just kind of tell you.
Great ideas, too.
They do have great ideas.
They have, they have great ideas, too.
Yep.
But refining them, gotta refine those ideas.
All right, great. Anything else? All right, policy updates?
Yes, so the, the ones, and, and I guess I'm not sure, did you have a chance to read through any of the policy updates?
So, I did start to read through a few of them. I did not finish, so I'm not even gonna lie.
We may have to table those to the next, so that we have a quorum.
Let's table those.
Yeah. Do you need to make a motion to table?
Oh.
I'll make a motion to table the updates made to the policies until next meeting.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's move down to new business, and we'll come back to policies next time.
So, in your packet, you'll find the third quarter report from the SWAC Board of Directors, who met on May 19th. This is a procedural thing that these, this information has to be shared with you. We have a great collaboration with SWAC and the GROW, and the kids, and the staff that we work with there. So, again, that's just an informational point to share.
Thank you.
The next item is an announcement of our retirees for the end of the 2022-2023 school year. We thank them for their support and dedication to the Auburn Public Schools. Karen Berkowitz, who has served as our longtime district data coordinator, I think she began with us as a secretary. She's been with us for 22 years. She'll be retiring as of June 30th of this year. Mary Hamilton's been with us for 29 years as a middle school instructional assistant. She'll be leaving us at the end of this school year. Dottie LeBeuf, Auburn High School nurse, well, for 19 years, served well Auburn Public Schools, and I would be remiss if I didn't compliment her on her work through COVID, which was overwhelming. And Nancy Styling, middle school grade six science teacher, up to 16 years, will be retiring this year, so we certainly wish them well as they start on a new adventure through whatever they choose to do, so.
Great.
This, this evening as well, there are letters for you to sign. They've been prepared for signatures of the committee members to go to all staff members retiring at the end of this year, so those are there for you, so as long as there's a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to sign the letters to retirees and have them distributed.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
So, we gotta get to where I am here in my packet. Yeah, I got it. I'll get there. Yeah. All right, the next item is a job description update. Custodial Second Shift, Second Shift Supervisor Job Description. Mr. Fahy did some revisions to this. The Second Shift was typically, high schools become busier and busy, or as you might imagine. And so, just to refine some of the things, to give this person a bit more responsibility related to the supervision of the other staff who's working at the Second Shift at that time, and to make sure there was clarity for the person in that role. So, it's nothing unusual for a custodian role, we just had a very limited previous job description.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second. That one I did read, and I, yeah, it was good.
All right, we can skip over out-of-state field trip and go down to teaching and learning.
Do we vote?
Oh, I'll, I'll entertain a motion, I should say.
I'll make a motion to approve the job description for the custodial Second Shift Supervisor Position.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, teaching and learning.
So, this evening, as we do each year at this time, I've shared with you a list of the class of 2023 colleges, universities, and next phases in their career. We have two students who have enlisted in the United States Army. They were recognized at graduation, along with what I think is the most impressive list of colleges and universities I've seen. I didn't do an exact count, but I got up to close to 190 different, it seemed like, 100 or 160 different schools that are represented here, in, all over the country seemingly. And so, I mean, nearly, they're, they're all just really well-regarded institutions for learning, so Auburn will be well-represented as our students move on in that regard, as well as in the military. So, we're very proud of them, and graduation was, as Bella said, a huge success. Awesome. And I got to see my album motto on the list. Very excited. Go you.
All right, business and financials.
So, I am stepping in for Mrs. Worsbicky again this evening as well. She wanted to see if you would recommend to accept gifts from both the class of 2021 and 2022, have donated a total of $7,000 to the Helping Our Own Fund account, which was established several years ago to assist in removing financial barriers for our students wanting to participate in educational extracurricular activities within the Auburn Public Schools.
Awesome.
So, for instance, Mr. Berg's trip that he discussed this evening, if there were found someone who wanted to go, but really was financially unable to do so, a staff member would apply. There's an application they fill out, they send it here. We determine if they qualify for that, and we've paid for a number of events for kids to go to, which really opens a world for many who are unable to attend.
It's amazing.
So, that's a, that's, Mrs. Worsbicky, I will say, was very happy to get some money. She likes to kind of keep things healthy.
Yes.
So she was happy to have that donation, because she felt like we might be getting a little low, so that's a good thing.
That's excellent. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the generous donations from the class of 2021 and the class of 2022 to support the Helping Our Own Fund in removing financial barriers for our students.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, that's great.
The class of 2022 also generously donated $10,000 to set up individual gifts, gift accounts, with $5,000 each for Unified Sports at Auburn High School and Unified Sports at Auburn Middle School. They've specified that the funds will be used for the purchase of unified athletic uniforms and providing for the future needs of these successful programs, which, I mean, tonight speaks for itself as far as how Unified is in our district. So, I think that's amazing that the class of 2022 voted to kind of support, financially support these groups that way. Again, it's so nice to see kids taking care of other kids. Yeah, it's just nice, yep.
I will entertain that motion.
I will make a motion to accept with gratitude the generous donation from the class of 2022 to support the Unified Sports Teams at Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School.
And I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Year-to-date budget.
Okay, and just for your information, Mrs. Worsbicky provided a year-to-date budget report dated June 1st, 2023, for your review. Along with, she would also like to thank the committee for their vote of approval for the omnibus transfers to be made, closing out the FY 23 budget. She's working on those transfers with me, and we'll have those ready to share at the next meeting.
And do we need executive session?
We do not.
Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.